I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
What's up, Rory?
What's up?
What's up, Rory?
I'd like to call the meeting to order at seven oh two. Just want to remind the audience members that during public comments, please limit your time to five minutes per person. If anyone from the audience has something to say during public comment, can you please not ask any questions to those people? Please, all questions really need to come to the board. If anyone wants to discuss anything after the meeting, they're more than welcome to do so. But I know there was a little interruption last meeting and I just wanted to bring it up because it was brought up. That being said, can I get an approval for the minutes for the regular meeting from November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three?
Make motion that we approve minutes as presented.
Thank you.
I second it.
Thank you, Lance. Thank you, Diane. All in favor?
Aye.
Trustee Latimer is not going to be here tonight. That being said, and correspondence, Christine.
We received Bank of New York melon collateral statements for the weeks of November twentieth and November thirtieth. We received a payment in the amount of one hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars from the Orange County Community Development Block grant for their portion of the Route Two Eleven water main project minus the holdback. So the total grant was a hundred and twenty-five thousand. The board members have received a draft copy of the meeting minutes for the November sixteenth meeting. We have received an application from the fire department for Natalie Marie Cunningham to join the Village of Otisville Volunteer Fire Department as a junior member. We received a proposed two thousand twenty-four Town of Mount Hope Village of Otisville intermunicipal fuel agreement, which was approved by the Town of Mount Hope already, Town Board, and there are no changes to last year. That was forwarded to all of the trustees a few days ago. On November thirtieth, I received an email from Robert Bennett, deciding from the celebrations committee. And we received a letter from Corrine and Jim Reichfeld regarding water rates for well owners in the village, which Mayor Kerry has asked me to read. To Mayor Kerry and the Village Board of Otisville, during our telephone conversation of November twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three regarding water bill payments, I requested an explanation of our water bill because we have a well and have never used village water. My husband and I were told in nineteen ninety-two, when we questioned the bill, that we were required to pay the fee because the fire hydrants ran down our road and would provide village water for fire protection should we ever need it. This never made any sense to us since a portion of our village taxes goes to the Village of Otisville Fire Company. We have paid a water fee for over thirty years. The fee has consistently risen during this time and recently increased twenty dollars more every four months. Our bill is currently two hundred and forty dollars per year. One might say this is a nominal charge, but when you are living on a budget and paying for a product you do not use, it seems quite unfair. A rule was established many years ago that required all residents to contribute toward water costs. However, four homes in the village have a well. This means there are four village homes paying for water they do not use. It is not easy to understand how the village can justify a rule that is unfair to four homes. We request that the board look over this obsolete rule and consider abolishing it. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Corrine and Jim Reichfeld.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The one for Mr. Bennett. It was in reference to him being no longer wanting to be on the celebrations committee.
Celebrations committee.
And that's effective immediately?
Immediately.
Thank you. Okay. DPW, Frank and John.
Picked up the leaves around the village, winterized the ball field stand in the bathrooms, finished installing a total of three hundred and eighty feet, a twenty-four inch drainage pipe on two-eleven. Built out the paperwork for the Orange and Rockland for the holiday lighting decorations on the poles and mailed. Built out the paperwork and poll numbers for the new banner program mailed to Orange Rockland. Truck number nine is still being worked on at J and A Repair. Also, we're still waiting on parts for truck number three. We have another communication issue again from the water plant to booster pump station. General control system has been notified. And a new backstop on the B field has been installed.
We've had been having the guys work on the Sanders, Wilton's we have. We put up all the Christmas lights and tree decorated trees. With that, we have two outlets that have need to replace next year, one over by the sanitarium, the gas station, and one on Baker Street. They're just shot. I have the material. We just have to build and get in the electrical inspection. I'm cleaning up around the yard today and covering the equipment for the winter. We put up the stop, stop and no parking signs of the parking lot. It came out good. Also, we've been cutting brush at the park. I've gotten some prices on new hot water heaters for the bathrooms down there. I'm looking into Instant Hot for two and a half gallon, one ten on each of the sinks on the backside wall in the porch. Because the way it's set up now with the old hot water heater, time we got hot water to the ladies room, you went through ten gallons of water and the hot water heater just rot out because it's not being used. We're gonna need to move a garbage day in March. I'll keep everybody posted, give them more strict dates, which is a Wednesday, and move it to Thursday because we have a big safety class in Town of Walk Hill that's still available first time in a while. So I'm gonna take the guys and get them into that. Also, I want to thank everyone that donated to Toys for Toc program, through the Highway Safety and Association. Let everybody know the holiday toy train will be arriving at the Town of Walk Hill Station at four P M. on Sunday. It will be coming through Otisville. We go to Port. So I'll text everybody if you want to come down and see it. As they say, it's supposed to be very cool. They got a lot of lights and stuff on it.
Awesome.
That's all I have. Also, the new guy started yesterday and I think he'll work out very well.
Yes, very well.
He'll be at the Christmas party.
I'm just here, but I actually got to experience the basement here, basically. Okay, awesome. Thank you, guys. The stop signs look great. I love the reflective on. I mean, hopefully stops people from hitting the eye growl. You know, it's not going to move the way it was designed. Two-eleven, you guys got that project done since the last time, too? The pipes in the ground?
The pipes in the ground, yeah.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jim, tell them about.
Town Christmas tree lighting will be on the sixteenth of December at six-thirty at the town hall. We had to move back down there because of rentals this week, this year. We approved our two thousand twenty-four meetings for next year, town board meeting. Just FYI, the February second meeting is delayed a week because of it's the training new elected official training, the third week in February. So three of our members, I think, are going to that. So we postponed it to the following week, Monday. And maybe there's anything else we can think of. That's it. It was quite a meeting.
Association of Towns in New York City. That's the training. You gonna go?
Nah, three members are going. I figure I let them go. I might go next time.
Oh, good. The one in Albany is better.
Yeah.
Anyway. Mountain Police Department. Do you have anything you'd like to talk about, sir?
Sure, sure. I'll have to stand up for this now. All right, so you can see that I still haven't shaved. The participating members of the PBA, along with myself and the chief, are doubling down for December, so we're doubling our donation to Aubrey's Army. We're gonna continue until we can't take this anymore. Which is coming rapidly. Our new police officer will be graduating the academy December twentieth. His first shift will be December twenty-second. To see a new face with the Department of Officers Zoom. The department is participating in the Stop DWI campaign for the month of December, so you'll see an increase of patrols on certain nights. Hopefully, everybody obeys the traffic, traffic laws, and they're not drinking and driving. You'll notice that we've removed one of the speed signs. It's been there for a month. It only clocks going one way and counts cars. We've counted the exact number.
Thank you.
Sixty thousand, five hundred and eighty-two cars for the month of November going northbound on Highland Avenue. Sixty thousand.
You don't happen to have the breakdown of speed for those cars, Steve?
I can tell you that so the speed alerts have dropped drastically to, I believe, towards the end of the month, there were maybe three or four. Wasn't a lot. And that was on the overnights. Well into the wee hours of the morning where cars were moving approximately double the speed on that. And that's about it. That's all I've got for you right now.
Awesome. Thank you. Moving on down here to, since Mr. Latimer's also supposed to be out today, fire chief report will have for next meeting. Who remembers where I started off last time? Diane, Bob, who did I start off with last time?
I forget.
You started with Bob last time.
Well, Diane, it's your turn today.
Do you keep track?
Thank you.
No one else does, so you're right. That's what I need to say.
Streetlights. The light on Finchville and the light on Gordon are reported, but polls are still out. Thanks to Mayor for giving me poll numbers for two additional lights that were not functioning properly, so they have also been reported. One of them, just for your information, the one on Kelly Hill Road is an incorrect number on the poll. So what I did was, what I've done in the past, and it's been used to work my process of elimination and picked the closest one, reported that number. And then there's a place that you can put the notation in that we believe that the number on that poll is incorrect. So hopefully, when they come out, they'll correct that as well.
That poll, just so everyone knows, it's at the bottom of the bypass. It's kind of an older light, but it's on all day long. It's probably one of the only ones. It's just on all day long. And I think, I hope they replace it with an L E D, so when they pull that bypass route out of there, it will be nice and light up in that corner.
It's interesting that you say that, too, because the other ones that I've run into, except for the one on Gordon Street, where the numbers were incorrect, they were ones that are on all the time. So probably people have tried to report them in the past and they just you know, it comes back as an error because there is no such number.
And the other one I gave you was in the municipal lot.
And that's reported, yeah.
Yeah, which is, it blinks. That's just, yeah.
So we've got now four of them that are waiting on. The Z B A has nothing on there, had nothing on their agenda. The December meeting was canceled, but that was not because of the agenda, but due to a lack of quorum. They did not have enough members who were going to be able to attend. Quarterly review assignments. I was finally able to take care of the bank reconciliations. I forwarded the memo to the mayor and as well as copied it to all of the trustees, so. And my reason for doing that is so you don't have to pull the book out and look at it when your turn comes. You can look at what the findings advance. Bottom line is that the accountant and the clerk treasurer really should be commended. Their attention to detail and organization of records makes it go so smoothly. And that's very much appreciated. Community advisory board to the state and federal prison. It looks like we're gonna be able to start meeting the way we're supposed to. So the next quarterly meeting will be in January. That will be held at the state facility. I just bring it up now because if there are things that you want addressed, such as the water tower, we can put something together so that that can be done. And the next village board meeting on the twenty-first, I will not be able to attend. That's all I have.
Thank you, Diane. Lance?
All right, I don't have a lot, but anybody drive by Finchville and see Phil B. to see that catching finisher can have a good job. I think you guys, you've been doing all the works. The light show is good last night and last weekend. You guys are doing a good job. I know you got ready for the winter. I'm gonna talk about the Chinese Advisory Committee, but the mayor will talk more. More of a Chinese New Year coming up, February seventeenth and eighteenth, from eleven to six on Saturday and Sunday. More flyers we get out on that as the day comes closer. My century Santa is next Saturday at the senior center from four to seven. So you have to sign up on the webpage, sign up. It's not a free for all just to walk in, so we have to count how many kids and how's it take. And that's it.
You have a good turnout for that?
So far, yes. We're probably gonna cut it off close to a hundred.
Wow, that's awesome.
Not far from that number now.
Well, listen, next year you'll move over to the youth center if you're gonna have a bigger area. Your flyer is up on the Bolton Board. It's down at the park. It's online. The Chinese New Year flyer, which I have also, is over on the Bolton Board. I will post it online. It's not till February, but we're gonna get it out there. I don't like posting stuff too, too early, but they already have a flyer out. And like Lance said, they're gonna actually use both centers this year, which should be interesting. Thank you.
I have a quick question on the B field, because I haven't been down there. Did they do just the backstop or did they complete the whole project?
Whole project down to dugouts.
Okay.
I took before pictures. I didn't know until Frank said something and until Lance said something. I will go down tomorrow, take some photos of what it looks like now. So stay tuned to tomorrow so you can see the pictures. Unless you drive down there between now and then, I'm not standing. I will post pictures because I know Brian had told me that it was on their, on their list to do, and I'm sure they want to get a lot of stuff done before it got, we didn't get a bill yet for that, did we? So that's how soon it was done. All right, okay. Thank you. All right, Bob, you're up.
Excuse me. Tomorrow, Friday, the D M V mobile bus will be at the town hall. What time do they be there?
Nine A M. Ten A M. Ten A M. Ten to three-thirty.
You mentioned the tree lighting the sixteenth at six-thirty at town hall. Planning board meeting is the twelfth of this month, seven P M. Go to that one. And the only other thing I have, the old school a couple of the board members met with the building inspector to go over a list of things that still had to be done before they can get a temporary C O. So he gave us a list of items that have to be done, mostly minor, and they're working on that. So that's basically it. They're working with the building inspector. Hopefully, we'll meet the requirements and we'll have a temporary C O. in the near future. I think that's all, sir.
Okay. You guys are celebrating your seventh year. I saw it come up in my memory post on Facebook. Thank God for Facebook and reminding us of what happened however many years ago.
Doesn't seem that long. In some ways, it seemed a lot longer.
Well, listen, that's a, that's a good thing. That's a good thing. All right, thank you, Bob. Mayor's report. I got a couple of things here and I'm gonna try not to I just wanna, I hope everyone had a happy Thanksgiving. We haven't met since Thanksgiving, so I want to put that out there. Tonight is also the first night of Hanukkah, so I want to wish everyone that celebrates Hanukkah a happy Hanukkah. This year, we have a menorah at Village Hall, which is in the window, which I was here at four twenty-eight to light. The first candle tonight. December sixteenth is Reeds Across America. We have, I already noted it at this time, Diane, a hundred and twenty-eight reeds total. They were able to reach their goal. This is at Holy Name of Jesus Cemetery. I think it's pretty awesome that we are on the map for this. And why I say that is there's four thousand one hundred locations where Reeds Across America goes out on the sixteenth of December and actually lays all these reeds out. We happen to be one of them. If, I know they're definitely looking for volunteers as they always are. So if you're not doing anything this Saturday, this Saturday, no, I'm sorry, next Saturday. Sorry, I'm a week ahead of myself. Two weeks from now, or two weeks from, one week from this Saturday, I'll say right from last time. Come over at two o'clock to Holy Name of Jesus Cemetery, help us lay some reeds. There's gonna be light refreshments at Brennan Mall afterwards. The Christmas tree lighting, I think they went great. Thank you to the DPW, which I'll probably say ten times during my speaking here. Thank you to the celebrations committee for making this become successful, as it always is up at the firehouse. To Christine and Kate from the clerk's office, very involved, as always. The fire department for the escort of Santa down to the park and then up to the firehouse. And then to Santa and friends for volunteering their time to make it all great for all of us. The mobile D M V bus was here November twenty-first. They had a total of twenty-nine transactions, which means we are on the listing to stay for two thousand twenty-four. And what I mean by that is they were kind of trying to decide where it works the best. I am happy to say that it is more successful in the Village of Otisville than it has been at the Town of Mount Hope. No offense to them, but we are a great location wise for people to stay. I have a call into Ed English from the county clerk's office to get a date for January. So I'll have that before next meeting, but I will post it for January, when it's gonna come here. Year-end celebration. I decided to put together a year-end celebration for Village of Otisville and Town of Mount Hope employees. We are going to have a sit-down dinner, all of us, on December nineteenth over at the senior center. The cost is ten dollars, and the reason that I bring it up publicly is because I want everyone to hear me that hasn't signed up yet or hasn't given their money to the clerk's office, to our, obviously clerk's office here and to town hall clerk's office. Please get that in so we know who's coming, because I have to work on the food part for this weekend. Village shirts. When I first got here, we kind of did some embroidery on shirts and I put it out to everyone. They can get up to three. I know Diane has shirts on my desk, which I will get done. Also, Kate gave me a shirt. Christine, I know you're on that list, but anyone that wants to get any shirts embroidered up to three, please have them to me by maybe Thursday, the fourteenth, if that works for anyone that wants to do that. Buy a shirt, bring it in, and I'll bring it down and get it embroidered for you. Almost done. Trust me, I'm almost done. The Chinese community advisory meeting that we had, I think it's growing. We learned a little bit. We had a guest speaker from the new Middletown business that used to be, for those people that have been here for many years, the old Tompkins Building. They have completely remodeled it. If you have any memories of going to that building in the past and you want to kind of relive those memories, go in and see what they did to it because they have a huge chandelier, this stair, it absolutely looks awesome. So that gentleman had come to speak to us. They did reschedule because they're not having another meeting. Well, they're not having a meeting in December because of all of the holiday stuff going on. But I think it was January, you know what? I'm sorry that I don't have it. Do you know what it was last January? That's right.
No. They really have a set date.
They were working on it. That's mine. That's mine. I realized that November eighteenth, two days after our last board meeting, was the last defensive driving class that we had held, as in worked with D cap driving school. We had a total of thirty-eight people go through that class. So I'm happy to announce that seventy-six people in the Town of Mount Hope, in the Village of Otisville and wherever else they may be locally, are hopefully driving better. Well, that will be a police department question, but I'd like to think seventy-six people went through that class, which I think is pretty awesome that we had that much of a turnout. I am gonna work on doing a class with the town also, kind of involve them in it sometime spring, maybe. I'd say late spring. I know we've had a couple of people asking about it already. Last but not least, I kind of talked to Christine about this and her and I are gonna work on. I want to figure out a way in two thousand twenty-four to be able to contact our residents and let them know about important things like water mains. I know I had, I'll just tell the story why I got there. I know I had woke up last week when I was working on two-eleven, going into work a little late, turned on the water to get in the shower, and what don't I have? No water. But I just want to figure out a way, not because of that, but that obviously adds to it. I just want to figure out a way to get information, whether it be through text messaging or through email to our residents if we have a water main break, if there's a a garbage date for whatever reason, if the truck, something happens to happen to it. Just a way to communicate to all of our village residents. I know a lot of people are renters, so we have a decent amount of renters here. So sometime in two thousand twenty-four, when it gets warm, I plan to go door to door and ask people why, probably while handing out information for the summer concert series next year, to get their information, text message and email, so we have a mass amount of people for that. I think with as small as we are, I don't think it's gonna be that big of a deal to do, but I plan on taking on that task and I will get some pricing. Constant Contacts is one of the companies I know other municipalities use. Learning a little bit about it, I actually kind of signed up for it yesterday, not at any fee, but for a trial, just for the purpose of learning how it works and seeing what's available. But we're gonna take a look at some others and stay tuned for that to come back, so. Enough of me talking. Let's bounce right down to audience participation. Anyone from the audience have anything to say? Does it please step up, state your name? Not that we don't know, but please state your name for the record.
This Sunday from seven A M. to twelve noon at the Pocatello Firehouse on Mount Hope Road. Breakfast with Santa. It is a fundraiser for the Pocatello Fire Department. They are sponsoring next year's county parade. Come out, support us. It's eight dollars for adults, five dollars for kids over five and seniors, and kids under five eating furies. And you can get a picture with Santa at the same time.
Does that bring your own camera? Are you guys taking?
No, they will. They saw the camera.
They do. Awesome. All right, thank you very much. Any audience participation? Go on once.
I only want to say that you neglected to mention that today is Pearl Harbor Day.
I apologize. Thank you.
Now it's been mentioned.
That would be Mrs. Marizio, in case those at home that are watching that didn't see. Yes, thank you. Anyone else, audience participation? Thank you very much. Let's move on down. Old business. Quarterly reviews. We all know who knows who needs what. Let's see here. Brian Latimer. This was completed September twenty-second. Diane, I have here, yours was completed November second and also I'm sorry. Sorry, Lance, remember your second. Good catch. And Diane, yours was completed on the fourth. So thank you for completing them in a timely manner. Moving on down to new business. Proposed law regarding the abandoned utility poles. Senator Skofus' office kind of had sent this out. Why, driving around the village, I didn't actually take my photo. I actually have a photo of what this is. Does anyone have a question as far as on the board, what these, what these ghost poles for choice of word? Bob, any questions about what they are?
Really?
All right. I know we have at least five, if not six of them, from what I've seen. They are here. It's a question of it's just a question, I guess, of having the authority, the telephone companies, they were just supposed to, yes. So Rory, what do you, what do you want to say about it?
I don't have much to say other than this was an initiative by Senator Skofus. Another municipality representative adopted it. It's, I think it's a no-brainer. Gives us authority to take care of things that are a liability for our residents. They shouldn't be there and they get neglected and they sit there for years and they're an eyesore. Now you have authority to take care of it. Diane, I appreciate the feedback. I would like to incorporate your additions or edits or whatever you want to call them. When you guys got the draft of this, I did not incorporate the numbers, which you
Well, and it was mostly titles.
No, it was great. I appreciated that. It was very, like, I mean, you know, the code is as well as certainly, I would say, even better than I did at this point. You've been around it long enough. So it was, it was, feedback was great, and I would like to incorporate that into what ultimately, if you decide to adopt this, but my, I would encourage you to adopt it from a liability standpoint. It gives you authority to take care of stuff that, you know.
I only had one question.
Sure.
And I think I know the answer to it.
Great.
This only applies to village-owned roads, correct?
Correct.
So it would not, because a lot of them are not on, a lot of the ghost poles right now are on county and state roads.
I know Field Road has one.
Yeah. Field and Shovel, I think, has one as well.
I don't know. I would presume, and I, and I'll get to an answer on this. I don't know, I would presume, and I, and I'll get to an answer on this, that the county is adopting a similar law. I just don't know what the state's doing. And it's coming down.
Question, yes.
This came down from, from the top, right? It's like a state senator who covers our area. But I'll, I'll confirm that, but that, uh, logically, I would, I would imagine we don't have a purview on those roads other than to, that's, that are, uh, counterparts to take care of.
Right.
Yeah, so.
That's what I think.
Yep.
Thank you.
But again, no, I thank, thank you for, for chiming in on. So, um, if, if everybody's comfortable with it or you want discussion on the dais, ultimately put it to a vote, put it out for a public hearing and on the, the remaining meeting. We'll get notice out with it.
I just wanna.
Seems like a no-brainer, but.
No, again, I just wanna add, case people from the audience don't realize what we're talking about. This is when someone like O N R comes in and puts a new utility pole in. They cut the pole, the old pole, they put a new pole in, they move all of their electric wires up and they leave the, uh, telephone lines and the cable lines on a, on a half pole or a, or, or, I guess the remaining amount of the old pole and those lines are never moved over to the new pole. And that's, that's what it is. And sometimes they leave them and they leave them for years and years.
Years.
And, um, obviously it's being, it, it's a problem, obviously, if the state senator got involved and he kind of let everyone know about it. So, uh, okay. So that being said, um, can I get a motion to, um, for a motion to schedule a public hearing for our next meeting, which would be, uh, let's see here, December twenty-first?
Make a motion that we schedule a public hearing for December twenty-first.
And noting we're, we're adopting the, the proposal I put forth with Diane's edits, edits came in. So everybody got those.
Only the mayor got those.
Okay.
I didn't forward them to everyone.
So, so just for, they're ministerial in nature, they're not material in nature. They're headings and, and the copy you have in front of you, for example, has section blank dash three. I had drafted this law, uh, elsewhere, so, um, it was just Diane incorporated where it fits into the code.
Some of the other, uh, things that had, had to be switched were the, the model talked about the superintendent of highways, where ours is superintendent of public works. So those were the type of changes that had nothing to do with the, the material contact of it.
Correct. So, uh, you're adopting it, or it's going to, to vote to go to public hearing with the material nature of this, with Diane incorporated ministerial.
So I'll send that to everyone in the morning.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
So we have until next meeting to look at this one. As long as we get it before next meeting, we're still in that spot.
Now, I, I mentioned I will not be at that meeting, but just for the record.
We know I feel.
I'm completely in favor of this.
Perfect. Okay. So that being said, can I get a motion for the edits and changes to what we currently have for Rory? Uh, with some additions that Diane had written back, which everyone will get a copy from.
I made that motion.
Thank you. And to add to that, just to also schedule the meeting for the twenty-first.
At seven PM or soon thereafter, it'll be.
Second motion.
Thank you. All in favor? Okay. That was easy. Um, but election hours. I wanna talk about this a little bit. Our hours for elections currently at the village level are from twelve PM to nine PM. Now, I don't know where those, where that rule came from. I probably can imagine that it's a very old rule. It probably has been around for a very long time. I just, I kinda talked to Rory a little bit about this before the meeting, only because I wanted to put it on the agenda for this time. Going back to, and I'll just turn back time here, going back to the anniversary before, well, since it's the, uh, old school's anniversary, um, while sitting on a different board, I was kinda adamant that when the vote went out to a public vote, that, um, the hours were gonna be given to people from six AM, like a normal election, to nine PM. This way, there's no question, no one can say anything that I didn't get time to vote, I didn't have the ability to vote. That particular election was, um, interesting enough, for those of you that remember, seven years ago, only a hundred and twenty-six people came out and voted at that election, by the way. I don't know if you remember that or not, but, uh, um, that being said, out of those hundred and twenty-six people, it was, the decision was made, but that election was all day long. I was kinda adamant then and, uh, I'm very adamant now about changing our election hours for the purpose of, I don't think we have ever given people in the village, and this is strictly a village election, the time that elections should be for. Um, I feel they should be from six AM to nine PM, like every other election is. I understand there's a cost behind it, but we're gonna figure that out. I just wanna get everyone's opinion on it. So I'll start with you, Bob. How do you feel about this? How do you feel about the current election time being twelve PM to nine PM?
I think there's a little, sure, I would be in favor of extending it. I wondered why we just, we started it and then, like you said, it's just, uh, something we've been doing over the years. But, uh, I'd be in favor of extending the hours for.
Okay. Lance, how do you feel?
I've always been in favor of change. I thought, um, I used to work down in city, sometimes tough, you know, hours. And most, all, all the other elections all start at six. So a lot of people who I spoke to, they were being shortchanged by starting late. So I'm definitely in favor.
This way, people can vote before work too. They have the option, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Diane, how do you feel?
I don't have a problem with changing it. However, the difference between the election you were referring to, that was a special election, which did not give people the opportunity for an absentee ballot.
Correct.
Village elections specifically because it is a limited number of hours, almost anyone can get an absentee ballot. So, um, it's not as if, you know, if I'm working a shift and lots and lots of people work at the hospitals and the prisons and things and can't get here between twelve and, and nine, but they do have the opportunity for an absentee ballot. It's much easier to get an absentee ballot for that election than it is for some of the other elections, so. But I have no problem with changing it. The, the difference in cost will be nominal, it's just the, uh, election inspector's salaries, right?
And it's cheaper than a paid suit for voter frustration, so.
I think a lot of people have moved here over the years. I wish some people from the Patriotry Lighting kind of stuck around to give their opinion about it because I know two people that had asked, I think when you're trying to say that general election is this hours, but our election is this hours, I think it gets confusing. And I don't disagree about the absentee ballot, but I think getting people to have any knowledge on the election law is complicated in itself. To even get people to register to vote is complicated in itself. And, um, I know we've had people watch the rolls here, we've had a lot of people register to vote. We've had a lot of people leave. Um, we've had a lot of people move here, clearly with new houses, so. That being said, I guess we'll put it out for a vote.
Motion.
Well, actually, you know what? I'd like to do this.
Well, you do have to, your resolution has to be passed by the, the nineteenth of January and.
That's fine. I do wanna give trustee Latimer's opinion on this, so I'd like to postpone this and put it under old business for the next, for the next meeting.
I'll, I'll prep a resolution in, in anticipation of, or.
Yeah, it's, it's the resolution, yeah, that would have to set forth the hours and the date and everything. Yeah, it's an, it's actually in the name that I just gave.
I know we have to January, for those that didn't hear from Christine, January nineteenth, we have to get this done. Um, but I, I, again, I haven't talked to trustee Latimer about this, but I would like for him to get his. He's an elected official and I think he should at least have an opinion.
That's a good idea.
Okay, moving along. The Sleigh Riding Hill at Veterans Park. We're gonna discuss this one too, that's why it's on the list.
Where is it on the list?
You did not, you told me to take off your.
Oh, you took it off the list? I'm sorry.
You said you were gonna discuss it in your report.
I'm sorry, well, let's, let's pencil it in there. Sorry, it was on the original one and, uh, I just, again, I don't wanna, I just wanna throw it out there and discuss and we can discuss it between now and next meeting too. I'm sorry. I printed off the agenda that you had sent me and, uh, it's online, so I wrote, I made notes online, I'm sorry. Um, the Sleigh Riding Hill at Veterans Park. When I first got here in April, I actually reached out to Jason, our insurance, um, person, and I asked him, um, to look into what had happened with the Sleigh Riding Hill. So he got back to me, gave me some information and I'd just like to see what everyone's opinion is here. And again, I'd like to hear trustee Latimer's too, so we can talk about this now and kind of hopefully push this to next meeting also. But, um, I'd like to, uh, what's the term that I'd like to use? Um, I would like to see it utilized. I would like to see it utilized in a safe manner. I talked to Rory about this before the meeting too, but I would like Rory to have a conversation with Jason coming now in the next meeting, so that we can kind of get on the same page with it. I asked some questions, which Jason answered me. Uh, interestingly enough, I didn't know that Jason, our insurance guy, grew up here and he happened to sleigh ride there as a kid, so it was kind of an interesting conversation because he, okay. So that, that being said, go ahead.
Yeah, so I mean, uh, if, if there's a consensus that, that wanna allow it, what I would like to do is play around with the appropriate language with Jason to, uh, let's see, protect the village. Um, some assumption of risk type language that you'd see in most places where, uh, unsupervised activities take place in a public setting.
Like schools.
Schools, yes. And it's not uncommon. I mean, I can speak to other municipalities that, that have it, so. But I'll let the board talk about whether they want that before I go and expend time and effort and his effort.
Got it.
To compile language that would be acceptable to your insurer and your attorney.
Understood.
So it's, we guys talk about the spirit of it and then.
We're starting on your end, Diane, this time. What's your feeling?
You got all the heart of it.
We all slay road, road there and, but the reality is, it was a different time and a different place and, and people didn't sue over things that were their own fault. Um, the, the accident that did happen, the insurance company chose to settle, even though the village was not found to be at fault in any way. And our rates jumped significantly. So whether it's, I don't think the kind of clause that you're talking about would have helped us with that, would it?
It's, it's interesting, this is kind of the conversation I had with Brian is, and that's what I wanna talk with the insurer about is, you can put the Thomas signs up. If someone still does it around that, you know, it's like then you get into fencing off stuff and you get into that with the park and there's, there's like, there's, there's a limit to what you are expected to do to protect people for themselves, like attractive nuisance. It's called an attractive nuisance, right? So Sleigh Riding Hill is, you know, if you put the signs out there, um, and people still do it, then it does levy liability. But municipality, if someone gets hurt in your municipality, we're gonna get sued. Whether that sticks is a whole other thing. And then there's nuisance levels, right? And insurer is not looking out for whether, what it looks like for Otisville is looking out for its investors and the people that fund their insurance companies, right? So two different analysis. We're always gonna get sued if someone gets hurt on a village property. You can mitigate your liability through assumption of the risk type things. The scenario you're presenting is the perfect example. Sign or no sign, we were not at fault. We still ate it and our number went up. We can eliminate the hill, right? So it's the same discussion you guys had about the park and what to do with the, the park during the winter and, and being able to utilize the park and, you know.
Well, it's all, all tied in the end.
Right, right. So those, I mean, in, in a different capacity and that's adults, right? So you put a sign out for an adult to be supervised, like there's only so many.
It was an adult who got injured.
It's a perfect, right? I mean, that's, so, um, I, there's too many hypotheticals to directly answer that, but I, you know, it's, I don't, sign or no sign, the insurance fully got up. So I don't know, um, it's about utilizing your, your facilities, right? And if you want people to sleigh ride and put things out there, like, I don't know, there's no perfect answer.
I'm gonna tread lightly on my comment.
You should, that's why I'm here to.
I know.
So.
So my comment is this, I actually asked Jason, cause I've heard for years different stories, how someone sued. The person that sued didn't get a dime of money. The reason our insurance raised one up is because of.
Legal fees. I know, I know why you were gonna tread lightly. I, that's why I was said, go for it.
I know. I'm just saying, I might.
It was, it was, the thing is, it was their lawyer, not our lawyer.
Yes.
Let's be very clear.
Nothing to do with you.
Insurance company's lawyer.
Rory, you had nothing to do with that. That's, that's further.
But I don't know a way that, you know, if, if we're gonna get sued either way, then, you know, people maybe should be able to enjoy your stuff, but that's for you guys to decide. I'll give you my analysis once I talk to Jason.
Okay.
We did at the time have, I think it was hay bales we were using, because if, what I see in my mind, I, as the Sleigh Riding Hill, if you veered off of that.
Yeah, sure.
It's, it's really dangerous.
Yeah.
And e- even with that, you know, um, did this person kind of walked in front of a kid and got knocked over?
I mean, if you, even if you say no sleigh riding there, but you know that it's an attractive nuisance, then the, these gentlemen and, and other people are gonna have to set up either a fence to say you can't come in here or how do we protect it, right? So either way.
Yep.
If your stuff's open, right? The park, park's closed at whatever time and you fence it off and someone jumps that fence and gets hurt, they're still gonna sue us, right? So there's levels of that and I, you know, that's where I wanna talk to Jason, talk to these guys and then present back to you. But it's about, I'd say for the purposes of the dais, it's, put aside that part, talk about whether you want that utilized, the park utilized for sleigh riding and then I'll present back to you what the exposure is.
Who did it leave off on?
Uh, Diane was, I don't know if you finished.
I'm done.
For now.
For now.
Um, I feel, I slay ride like Diane's and most of the group in the village here, ain't no problem there. People sue no matter what and they're nowhere around it, so, um, and insurance companies never go down. They only need for one thing, to go up.
Right.
So no matter what, no matter what, if they can find a way to go up just by putting a sign up.
It does mitigate, it certainly does mitigate and the assumption of the risk type theory does mitigate. I just don't know how much.
You can't stop what morons do. Not saying, not saying the insurance. No, 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 I'll, I'll say to anybody, not saying insurance.
I'd be out of business if it wasn't for them, so.
I mean, you put all the signs you want there, the hay bale there, and they decide to put a ramp and jump and you're not there.
Yeah.
We're not there to stop them. They're gonna do it, so you can't help what morons do.
If you list yourself as a moron, everyone does.
I'll put that in the, uh, science, right?
As far as for it, yes.
All right, understood.
Thank you, Lance. Bob?
Yeah, I'm on, the record is, is, uh, I, I would like to see it utilized.
Would you be willing to go down in the slate, the first one?
He did go down.
He probably did go down the first one there. He's been there, he's been the first little league team.
I know my history, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I understand the risk and stuff and like Lance says, I mean, you're gonna get sued for no matter what happens. As long as, um, we use as much prudence as we can to, to protect the village as much as we can and whatever Rory thinks, I mean, you know, I would like to see us do that. Maybe consider like, um, having young kids under supervision of their parents, having an age when you can be by there by yourself. I don't know, this is all stuff we could decide.
Agreed, agreed.
But in, in general, I would like to see it utilized. I think, uh, I, I think the, um, the benefits have maybe the risks have maybe.
Good way of putting it. I like it. All right, thank you, Bob.
One other comment, and that's why I said.
I know.
Cause it doesn't really have to do with the Sleigh Riding Hill, but I think the bigger picture is we really need to talk about the parking lot, cause obviously if we're allowing it to be opened for sleigh riding, then the parking lot is gonna have to be addressed. And you know what? If Frank and John have a plan for how that could be done without tearing up the parking lot all the time, so.
Frank and John have a new employee, let's teach your new guy who's allowing to, um.
We wanna keep him, don't we? Maybe we ease him into this.
He has a great name, easy to remember.
Yeah.
You figure out what that is and, um, okay, okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Thank, well.
So put that on the old business for next meeting?
Yes, and I also wanna hear from trustee Latimer on his feeling on it, so that's fine. So we heard Diane.
There's some other time sensitive, obviously.
But you know what? Since you have the opinion of three people here, yes, let's put it on for next time. All right, thank you. New quarterly assignments. New quarterly assignments. Everyone understands what their quarterly assignments are for September 2023 through November 2023? Bob, sorry. Is that right?
Yes.
For 2024, so it would be, okay, okay. Bob, Brian and Lance are off this particular time, so you're off the hook this time then.
Yeah.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the application of Natalie Marie Cunningham as a junior member of the Village of Otisville Fire Department?
I make the motion to approve Natalie Marie Cunningham as a junior member of the Village of Otisville Fire Department.
Thank you, Lance. Can I go second? Thank you, Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Four resolutions to approve the 2024 Town of Mount Hope, Village of Otisville intermunicipal fuel agreement as we always have, as presented with no change to the prior year. Can I get a motion for that?
A motion to approve the contract.
Thanks, Diane. Thank you, Lance. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Oh, we, the motion was that we approve the resolution.
Do you wanna do?
So do you need a roll call?
Bob?
Aye.
Lance?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the bills, general, water and fire, and I'm just gonna read the amounts. General, fifty one thousand, seven hundred and ninety seven dollars and ninety seven cents. Water, fifty three thousand, one hundred and forty two dollars and seventy five cents and fire, twenty thousand, six hundred and seventy, I'm sorry, yeah, twenty thousand, six hundred and seventy four dollars and seventy eight cents. Can I get a motion to repair bills?
Make the motion to repair the bills.
Thank you. All in favor? Perfect. Rory, do you have a couple minutes after the meeting?
I do.
Alright. It's not really an executive session, but I just wanted to talk. So do I have to do that as an executive session or would you?
Cause we all like just hang out and talk?
No, 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 like talk to the board members. That's all. Would you rather do it in an executive session, cause we're all gonna be there?
Well, yeah, I think we would need to under oath.
That's fine, okay.
We need to do it. With the, you gotta give me a, a basis of the reason to go in executive session litigation. What personnel?
Personnel.
Okay.
Personnel. Sorry, for those of us that, that we're almost done, I apologize. It's not gonna take long. We'll be anywhere else. So can I get a motion to enter an executive session?
With no intention to return?
With no intention to return.
Do you wanna do the closing comments first?
Yeah, I'll do, if we're, yeah, that's fine. We're not bored yet, I think, for the record. That's fine. Any closing comments? Bob, I'll start with you.
No.
Okay. Lance?
No. Say about in two weeks.
Diane?
Just piggybacking on a couple things the mayor already mentioned, but I had jotted it down. He mentioned Hanukkah began this evening, so I wanna wish blessings of the holiday. It is a magical season for those who celebrate and we wish them well. Encourage people to come out to Reefs Across America. We're delaying the wreaths. If you've not been to one of those ceremonies, it is very moving. And last but not least, since I will not be at the next meeting, to wish everyone a safe Merry Christmas and Happy New Year season.
Thank you, Diane. The only thing that I have to add is I wanna thank Mrs. Doris Jansky for speaking tonight at the Patriot Tree. For those of you that weren't there, it's our 21st year of doing the Patriot Tree in the village. That was pretty neat in itself to learn that, how many years it's been. Also to Bob Edwards from the American Legion for coming and speaking tonight and thank you to trustee Lovin, Diane, for coming and doing her form as she normally does. I think it was a great turnout. Unfortunately, because of this meeting, I don't wanna say that we had to rush it, but we had to make it where it just worked out, so we were able to start our meeting on time. So thank you to all that have come down. I will be posting pictures after the meeting online for those of you that didn't make it from the general public. And again, thank you to Angel Marizio for bringing up that today is Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day. Today is the 82nd anniversary of Pearl Harbor. So thank you very much. And can I get a motion to exen, enter executive session?
No intention to return.
No intention to return.
So.
Thank you. Second?
Aye.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.